I'd like to call the September 13th, 2012, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Nuttman.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fryly.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Here.
First order of business today is council minutes from the meeting of August 9th and August 25th. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the council meeting minutes from August 9th and August 25th, 2012.
Second? Have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Nuttman.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryly.
Aye.
And Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Next order of business is matters of special privilege. We have two today. The first, we're pleased to welcome the President of the William &amp; Mary Student Assembly, Curtis Mills. Curtis, if you would like to come forward, take a few minutes to tell us about yourself and about what you plan for the year.
Cool.
Thank you.
Does this work? Yeah, it does. Just talk.
Right, I'll pick you on it.
Straight up, okay.
Just fine.
All right, well, as you described, Mayor Holman, 10 minutes is roughly where I'm at, so.
Okay.
My name is Kurt Mills. I'm a class of 2013 William &amp; Mary, and I am Student Assembly President here at the College of William &amp; Mary. Mayor Holman invited me to speak, and I graciously accepted. Mayor Holman and I go back a bit. I'm not sure he remembers, but I was a student, like countless others, running around in his freshman econ class just three years ago, and I assure you, I never quite envisioned addressing him and all of you all in this capacity. I won't bore you. I'm here to speak and focus primarily on the issue that matters most dearly to many in our community, and where I am particularly most pertinent, and that is the issue of town gown. An issue that is by no means unique to William &amp; Mary in Williamsburg, but is nonetheless incredibly important. Let me give you a brief background of myself. When I came here in the fall of 2009, I immediately registered to vote here in Williamsburg. Soon after, I signed on and joined the later successful campaign of one Daniel Scott Foster Jr. The student assembly and students at William &amp; Mary, of course, have a decades-long past flirtation with electoral politics that predates me, and even Scott, and even our formal right to vote here. While I am happy to report that the issue of students voting and students participating in the community and politics in the current form, I think is dead, long dead, like a cat buried in the yard, never to be seen again. I think we can all agree where we are right now is much better than we were in the past. The broad consensus in the vocal, not silent majority, and I know council agrees wholeheartedly with me of this, is developments electorally of the past five years have been great for all sides: student, professional, retired and professor, resident and non-residents, as well as visitors to our great town. From a student perspective and my own perspective, the triumphant campaign of Scott Foster and the appointment of Chris Connolly, undergrad class of 2015, and local resident before entering the college, the Planning Commission are great victories. The issues are approved from just the last two years ago. Last spring, for instance, I proudly supported the incumbents' reelection, something that would have been unheard of for someone in my position just a few years ago. But this is probably old hat. You probably already know and believe this. That's great. But what can I tell you from my end of things? First, and most shortly, I can tell you about the student assembly today as it relates to you, and even in the macro sense. It is my feeling and personally that we could have done a better job these last two years of engaging students following Scott's election. There's a number of factors there, and I'd rather not detail them, but let me assure you, we are back in business. Council and SA plan to meet hyper-regularly for the first time ever. We met once following the new Cruz election, both the SA and the re-elected council, and we have another meeting of the books for next week, and many more I am sure to follow. The Public Affairs Department, which deals with Williamsburg issues, is the largest it has ever been, and we are sending more emissaries to the various boards, committees, and commissions from the SA and William &amp; Mary student body than ever before. Further, we have a revamped focus on vigilant protection of student rights here at the college, which I will go into a bit later, whether it be from the college or the city, and that is a firm commitment of mine and my organization. Finally, our voter base is again expanding exponentially, well into the thousands of students here. Just this semester alone, we have gotten over 400 in less than three weeks involved and registered to vote here in Williamsburg. Significant participation of students is the path forward for all residents. Second, let me discuss what I think personally and what I think a lot of students think is working here in Williamsburg, because that is what I'm primarily here to do. City Green, Brick House Tap, New College Deli, Dog Street Pub, City Lofts, Tribe Square, Miller Hall, the New School of Education, the New Greek Housing Complex, Qdoba, Cupcakes, Chipotle, these are all new businesses and development projects that have happened in the three years since I've been here at William &amp; Mary. These are things that are just in development, which has come about just as I've been here. And make no mistake, development has triumphed, and let's not pretend otherwise, development is this great ancient city's way forward, and everyone seems to welcome and agree on that with council leading the way on this, and I thank you for that. On behalf of the student body of the College of William &amp; Mary, I thank you for that. Of course, it is not going to notice that the new framework for housing has also worked great for students here at the College of William &amp; Mary. There's not been an eviction for violation of the housing ordinance known as colloquially as the three-person rule in two years, and that is just great. Let's work together and make it work for the next 100 years. If there's a problem, let's talk it out, neighbor to neighbor, as one community, and as we say over at William &amp; Mary, "one tribe." All right, that's basically the bulk of what I'd like to talk about. Let me please close, though, on a couple of areas where I'm concerned, actually just one, but that puts into a broader theme of how we treat each other and how we plan for our future. As student body president, I get a lot of emails. I hear from a lot of students. I go to a lot of meetings. And a broad theme I'm hearing just this year, just what I can port, just this year so far, is that student confidence and trust in Williamsburg law enforcement is dangerously low at the current point. I'm not sure what the solution is, but I encourage council to develop one rapidly and maintain a directive that better represents all of its constituents. Social life is a universal part of university experience here globally, with little exception. That's just a fact, and it's always going to be that way. And frankly, and the aggregate, you guys got off a tad easy. Let's be honest, we're a fairly studious and cerebral bunch. You could do a lot worse. I mean, I just used the words aggregate and cerebral, so.
What do they mean?
A responsible containment strategy of social activity, and this includes residents of all ages, not just students, is the smart and shrewd course, not a control and crackdown strategy. That strategy does nothing, does little to solve the problem. It lowers public health and encourages dangerous clandestine alcohol and substance abuse, and abiders all residents as factions are pitted against each other. This is not the Williamsburg we want, or I want, or you want. It is not the kind of policy and scheme that we want to adopt or go back to. With the changing college and the new Greek housing complex, which is smaller than the current one, which will push more events off-campus, it is right now that students in the city and its residents develop a strategy that is responsible and prodigious at solving this and handling our ever-changing times. Thank you for your time, my very best to the citizens of Williamsburg and council. Thank you.
Curtis, if you would stay here just a minute, please. I think you have some members of your administration with you. If you'd like to introduce them, we'd appreciate that.
Oh, of course. I forgot everybody but me. Yes, okay. Over here in the back, Scott Carvallo. He is our primary ambassador, if you will, to Williamsburg. He goes to Neighborhood Relations. He goes to Planning Commission. He goes here, well, several other boards. You'll probably be seeing the most of him. In the back, Mackenzie Winter, Melanie Levine, and Drew Clan. Melanie is the student body vice president. Drew is the student representative to the Board of Visitors of the College of William &amp; Mary, and Mackenzie is my chief of staff.
Great. Thank you very much. Let me see if council has any comments or...
No, just thank you for coming out today, and we look forward to the conversations going forward.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll take any questions if that's appropriate.
Curtis, thank you very much for being here, and we do look forward to working with you. I hope we can set up regular meetings with you and your staff in the way we do with the president of the university, and I look forward to a productive year ahead. So thank you very much for starting it off in a great, great way. We really appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Our next matter of special privilege is public comment on the 2013-14 goals, initiatives, and outcome. Jack, would you like to provide a little framework and calendar of what's to come?
Right. We're now in the middle of a process. The city goes through every other year, and that's recasting the future direction, setting priorities, goals, identifying specific initiatives and activities to forward those goals. And as I say, this is a routine process, but it's a very important one, because when a new city council is elected, takes office, then begins the process of setting the direction, which will guide the next two budgets and move the city forward. And September is the month where, more than any other, this is the time we're looking for public involvement and input in the process. And a week from today, at the Community Building, at 7:30 in the evening, is one of the most important meetings of the year, and that's when the goals, initiatives, and outcomes for the next two years are discussed with the public. It's an interactive meeting. There won't be a lot of speeches on anyone's part, but a lot of opportunity for people to talk to each other and get ideas and perspectives. So that's where we are, and all through September and October, at times such as this, we're simply opening, proposing that you all open the microphone for anyone that wishes to make a comment on goals and initiatives for the future.
Great. With that, if there's anyone who wishes to make a comment addressing the goals, initiatives, and outcomes for the next biennium, please do so. If not, again, I'll remind you that a week from today, Thursday, the 20th, at 7:30 in the Community Building, there'll be a public meeting addressing these, and I think we have a nice format set up, so it'll be a lot of interactive opportunities for the public. Our next order of business is public hearings. We have two. The first is a request by Riverside Healthcare Association to amend the ED district regulations and to create the Economic Development Parking District. Reed?
The slide shows the current master plan for the Quarter Path at Williamsburg development and Doctor's Hospital now under construction is located here. Quarter Path Crossing Shopping Center here, Tutter's Neck Pond, and this is the route of Battery Boulevard that's now under construction. Riverside Healthcare Association is requesting changes to the text of the ED Economic Development District and parking regulations to facilitate the success of the Quarter Path Master Plan. The changes are proposed according to their application to facilitate several key elements essential in creating a Village Center, and this is a close-up of the artist conception of the Village Center. And these essential elements are mixed-use buildings, active streets, rear-loaded townhouses, and shared parking. Staff has worked with the applicant to prepare a package of revisions to the ED district and the parking regulations. I'd like to review the ED district changes first. We have one ED Economic Development District. That is the Riverside Property plus Quarter Path Crossing Shopping Center. High Street is in the ED II district, so this applies only to the Riverside Property and Quarter Path Crossing Shopping Center, which has already been developed. The changes we're looking at in the ED district are reducing front yards from 15 feet to 5 feet, and the same for side yards on a corner lot, reducing rear yards from 15 feet to 5 feet when adjacent to a street or alley. Because of the first three changes, the provisions to allow reduction to front side and rear yards with special use permit are not needed, because we've essentially done that with the first three items. Height regulations have been revised to allow buildings up to 60 feet high when set back 100 feet from Route 60 and Route 199. Currently, there's a 200-foot setback. And just for information, High Street has a similar provision for 60-foot-high buildings. The interior apartments for Sterling Manor, the ones perpendicular to and adjacent to Sterling Manor Drive, are a little, are close to the 60-foot height limit, as is the building on the other side of Middle Street closest to Five Guys. So that's the type of building height that we're talking about here. And the sixth change is allow detached garages for townhouses. That's a change that was also made for the Village at Quarter Path Development, and if you've been out there, you see there's a lot of detached garages behind townhouses. So all these are, I think, relatively minor change designed to facilitate the town center atmosphere that Riverside desires to promote in this development. The second part of these changes is creation of an Economic Development Parking District. This is similar to what we just did downtown for the Midtown Parking District. It applies to the ED district only, which is Riverside and Quarter Path Crossing Shopping Center. Business uses would require one space for 400 square feet, same as in the Midtown area, same for doctors and dentist offices. The residential hotel, motel, and hospital parking requirements are unchanged. One unique aspect of this parking district is on-street parking can be counted as part of the parking requirement. This is particularly important in this development because, for the first time in the city, they will be incorporating reverse-angle parking along the town center portion of Battery Boulevard, so there'll be over 200 reverse-angle parking spaces. So by providing those spaces within a public right-of-way and allowing those to be counted toward meeting the parking requirements, that reduces the amount of impervious surface required to meet the parking requirements. So this is a very environmentally-friendly change for the Riverside development. Also, we've added a provision that by right, parking may be located off-site if within 500 feet of a building entrance. It needs to be established by deed or easement. Elsewhere in the ordinance, this is required as a special exception or a special use permit, but in this situation with this being a master-plan development, approaching it this way seemed to make sense and allows for quicker processing and less red tape in reviewing the development. So when you take all of these changes together, they will allow additional by-right flexibility for developing Quarter Path at Williamsburg as one of our premier mixed-use developments. The reductions to the yard requirements are going to be most applicable in the Village Center area arrayed around the Village Green. In the Village Center area, commercial buildings will be able to be located right behind the sidewalk, just like we see downtown, say along Prince George Street or when the new Prince George Commons development is built. Townhouses will be allowed to locate close to the sidewalk, which porches at the property line, and buildings will be able to be closer to the alleyways. More flexibility in height will be allowed. So just like these regulations allow more flexibility in constructing the buildings in the development, the creation of a parking district will allow more flexibility in meeting parking requirements, and like I said, similar to what has been approved in the Midtown Parking District, and we also have the Downtown Parking District, and both of those have worked well. These changes support one of our goals in the Commercial and Economic Development Plan, the 2006 Comprehensive Plan, and that's to support development of High Street and Quarter Path at Williamsburg as the city's primary mixed-use developments. Staff recommended to Planning Commission that these proposals be approved. Planning Commission held its public hearing last month and recommended for O that the changes be approved, so to carry out Planning Commission's recommendation, council would need to approve Proposed Ordinance 12-21.
Thank you very much, Reed. Before opening the public hearing, I'll come to council for any questions.
I think I'll wait till after the public hearing.
Yep.
A question regarding the on-street parking being counted towards the requirement. These spaces can't be counted twice. I mean, and where would these spaces be? Would they have to be in front of a building?
To be, would have the 500 square foot from the entrance of the building, so that could be counted toward the requirement.
And if that building is next to another building, and this particular space is within 500 of each, will it be counted twice, or will somehow we...
No, it could not be counted twice, and we would, as we review the site plans and the buildings, we just need to keep track of what's counted for what.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't quite, yes. Reed, you mentioned the setback from Route 60?
Yes.
Isn't some of that in James City County?
Ah, yes.
Along Route 60?
Yes. So I guess essentially that setback is met from the distance back from the road to where the city boundary line is.
Or from the city boundary line?
I mean, it's, the setback is from the Route 60 right-of-way. We, this is...
Even though it's in James City County.
Even though it's in James City County. And actually, the Route 199 right-of-way is in James City County. The edge of the right-of-way is the city boundary line, so that's 100 feet back.
So how can we enforce that if it's in James City County?
Well, we can enforce it in James City County. We can only enforce it in the city.
Can I? The 100 feet setback from the edge of the right-of-way would be in the city. It's the edge of the right-of-way. That point of reference happens to be in James City County, but that's not relevant to the enforcement of what happens or is built in the city. That's just the point from which you're measuring.
Cerebral.
All right, still, okay. All right.
That help?
It helps. Thank you, Reed.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Ask anyone who wishes to speak to this matter. Please come forward, state your name and address.
I'm Suzanne Dell. I live at 322 Indian Springs Road, and I'm just coming, I may have heard this incorrectly. When Reed was talking about the amount of space between either the sidewalk and the street and the townhouses, was that actually 5 feet?
Yes.
Yes. So 5 feet from your front door to the sidewalk, by the time you step out there, where is the possibility for even a bush, do you know, for planting? To me, it sounds very much big-city-ish in its look. There might be islands that I can see on the pictures with greenery, but there's an awful lot of greenery shoved into this picture that really doesn't show any, in 5 feet, you really can't plant a tree. What will we do to keep the lovely green look that we encourage throughout Williamsburg? Is there a plan for that, to do something? What kind of landscaping is anticipated in front of all of these townhouses in that 5-foot block? Really, it's not, it's really not enough to even put a nice rocking chair, you know, at your front door. So does anybody know what the plan would be, what the facade would look like?
Reed, do you, can you respond?
We don't, we don't have detailed plans at this point. Those would come in as the property is developed. There are, of course, opportunities for street plannings in the landscape strip between the sidewalk and the curb. I mean, this, there could be townhouses with porches that are right up on the sidewalk, and townhouses could be staggered, and, you know, there's...
So if there's a porch, it's 5, 5 feet to the porch and then to the house?
Well, the porch can project 5 feet into the front yard. So you could have the possibility a porch could be right on your property line. The building could be 5, could be set back 5 feet. You have in some places at Newtown, for example, where you have townhouses, there are areas where the townhouses are right on the street. It's designed with these setbacks to be a more urban layout for their town center. The actual details of the layout, this would be subdivision approvals, and that would need to go through Planning Commission review, and if it's a subdivision for more than 25 lots, it would need to go through council review. Also, at that point, we would get the exact plans and could make, could make better determinations about the development at that point.
Any questions for Reed?
Still in the public hearing? I mean, haven't we talked?
Yeah, we are still in the public hearing, part, yeah. Okay, thank you, Reed. Anyone else wish to address?
Comment. I'm from Riverside, back on the...
Yep, please come forward and state your name and affiliation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Molly Trant. I'm legal counsel for Riverside Health System, and to piggyback on what Reed just said about the townhouses, we are looking to make the Village Center a village, so to make it slightly more urban, not, we're not trying to make it Metro DC by any stretch of the imagination, but we are doing a lot of green pocket parks and things like that throughout the entire project. There is going to be a tremendous amount of green space, and like Reed said, we will have to bring this back through for individual site plan approval for each and subdivision approval for each townhouse development that comes in.
Okay, great. Thank, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes?
I'm Bill Dell, 322 Indian Springs. I just have a question. Does this change the density per acre at all with these changes that you're talking about, Reed?
No.
Great, thank you. Any other, anybody else wish to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for questions and discussion.
Now I have a couple of questions. Mr. Nestor, I think these are mostly going to be for you. On the setback adjustment, going from 15 on the front, 15 on the side, 15 in the back, 5 on the front, 5 on the side, 5 in the back, that's not, it's not an either-or, it's an and-and. So, correct?
I mean, you...
You would have, you'd have to have 5 feet in the front, 5 feet on the side, and 5 feet in the back.
You would have to have at least.
Yes. So the question is, what's the, I get the, trying to create an urban feel, but where, I'm struggling with how you put houses with only 5 feet of yard space into any kind of organized pattern where you're not going to have an excessive amount of density, because those lots are pretty small. Assuming the townhouse isn't a one-floor townhouse, the footprint's going to be fairly small, so the size of the piece of property that it's occupying is comparatively very small, and if we're not counting the streets as part of the overall acreage that's being developed, it seems like you'd end up with a pretty high density per acre.
The, the density in the ED district, and it's done the same way in High Street, it's based on your net developable acres over the entire site. So, and for the Riverside development in the ED district, the standard density is 10 units per net acre. They proffered reducing that to 5 units per net acre. So, but the way the ED district is set up to allow mixed-use development, you would be, you have an allocation of a certain number of dwelling units within the ED district, so you can have a greater density in a residential area. For example, the land that Doctor's Hospital sits on contributes toward the allowable residential density, but there's not going to be any houses on the housing site, so essentially, it's sort of within the same piece of property, like a transfer of development rights.
So even, even then, the footprint of the hospital contributes to the developable land that's counted towards the density?
Correct. And in High Street, for example, the Sterling Manor Apartments are at a higher density than a 12 units per net acre allowed for High Street, but they can do that because there's no residential in the front part of the property. High Street was allocated 574 dwelling units, how, and they can do that with city approvals on a portion of the property and have a higher-than-12 for a portion in return for having lesser or no residential density for other portions of the property.
So with the consideration of reducing the setback, was there any discussion, and I appreciate Riverside's interest in developing these pocket parks and other green spaces in conjunction with the development, but just as we have a distance limitation on how far the associated parking places can be from a particular business, was there any consideration of having the... was there any consideration of having the lost setback space preserved in an open space within a certain distance from the place that it's taken? And my only concern is that this is not a downtown area. It's an area off, in a, a very wooded part, not, right now, anyway, a natural part of the city. And, um, I'm just a little bit concerned that we don't push too much concentration of development into one space. It creates sort of an impression of an artificial downtown. So, that's, that's rhetorical comment. Sixty feet high with a one-hundred-foot setback compared to a two-hundred-foot setback which currently exists, how does that compare with the rest of the one-ninety-nine corridor?
The sixty feet is only allowed, that potential's only allowed in the ED district. As we go down the corridor, say, from Quarter Path Road heading toward Jamestown Road, you have all of the heights. You have a small office district on South Henry Street. Then you have single-family residential for Holly Hills, and you have multifamily residential for the Woodlands Condos and Village Green. And the height throughout that area is thirty-five feet. And, and then the standard height for the ED district is forty-five feet, and it can be increased to sixty feet with that hundred-foot setback.
So is there anywhere else on the one-ninety-nine corridor that has that sixty-foot with a hundred-foot setback?
No.
Okay. And in your professional opinion, how does that, or does that not impact the Vista off from one-ninety-nine?
Well, in the, we have a green belt along one-ninety-nine, so there is a seventy-five-foot undisturbed green belt that is required. And then, your twenty, your twenty-five feet beyond that, where that sixty-foot height kicks in, there is a portion where Commonwealth Avenue goes along here, where Commonwealth Avenue is running right along that, that seventy-five-foot setback. So, you know, that's gonna be another fifty, sixty-foot right-of-way beyond that. And then you'll have a little bit of building setback. And you have, you'll have some situations here where it could be a possibility. But I think the seventy-five-foot green belt buffer, maintaining that is going to mitigate the majority of the impact. And if you look at the Sterling Manor Apartments as an example of a building close to sixty feet, those do not seem to be, at least to me, to be unreasonably high buildings where they're located.
Going down one-ninety-nine towards sixty, on the opposite side of one-ninety-nine, there's a fairly good-sized building. I guess that's James City County. It's in the I guess McLaughlin Circle area. Do you have any idea what the height of that is?
No idea.
It's, it's a hotel. I think it's, okay. All right. On the, you used the comparison of Quarter Path to Midtown for the, that's, we're looking at the same parking arrangement at Quarter Path that we have in the Midtown area that was recently approved.
Yes.
My recollection of our discussion is that one of the, one of the points of rationale behind that was that Midtown's also a good walking location from a variety of other parts of the city nearby. Is, unless the business, you know, to, so that's part of why we were able to do the more flexible parking arrangement with the expectation that improvements in the sidewalk, crosswalks will get, encourage more pedestrian traffic. Are we expecting a lot of people to be walking here?
Yes, there's, you know, there'll be a complete pedestrian system throughout the development. And you have the shopping center over here, and now the basic outline of the multi-use trail is planned to come through here and come over through there. And then eventually, that would be connected up into the residential area north of Tutter's Neck Pond. And, uh, of course, our subdivision ordinance requires sidewalks on both sides of new public streets, so I think, you know, just like if you look at Newtown as a newer development, there are sidewalks all throughout Newtown, so that's a very walkable community. And I think this is going to be a very walkable community, too.
And so is, is the goal of this to encourage that walkability and/or to discourage the larger seas of asphalt that tend to be required with this sort of development because of the need for a certain amount of parking with a certain amount of development?
Uh, I think it's, it's, it's a little bit of both, and I think there's also a realization that in looking at shared parking, one of the things we looked at was possibility of shared parking ordinance where you've allocate various percentages to different types of uses and figure out a total parking demand, and that's the parking you need to supply. But looking at what we did with the Midtown area, it seemed something similar would give us the same end result, and it would be easier to administer. But the idea is if you have office buildings, they're used during the day and not so much during the night. If you have restaurants, you know, they're used during the evening, so. I think a lot of the feeling is to make sure that we are not requiring more parking spaces than are actually needed. And I think being able to count the parking spaces in the street helps that. And, 'cause normally, you know, you might have parallel parking spaces along the public streets. You can't count those at all. But the people going, doing business in that area surely use those the same as they're in a parking lot. So I think, you know, we're trying, like I said, we're trying to be environmentally friendly and letting all the parking spaces that are going to be in that area count toward meeting the requirement.
And does the concept of the reverse-angle street parking require any approval, or is that just something that can be done?
That has been approved by Planning Commission when they approved the street design for Battery Boulevard.
And I'm, I'm not a, a, a fan of the large massive parking lots. That's redundant. But the large parking lots, we see a lot of places where they're meeting a code requirement, and they're never completely full, no matter how busy the business is. So, I understand the concept, I'm in favor of it, and yet I'm also, I also want us to exercise some caution. And I don't know if we do that in the site plan review process, but just to make sure that this area is treated as sympathetically as possible. And from everything Riverside has done so far, I have no reason to believe that they would do anything but that. And yet, at the same time, we're setting up a framework that will last for a long time and will be difficult to change, so. We'll count on staff in that site plan review process to make sure it turns out as well as it can.
Scott, do you-
Reed, is there any, is there a real hurry on this? Why, why have they brought this request now? Is, is there just- Do we, do we know that?
Well, I think, and Molly Trant may want to, to add to this, but right now, Planning Commission has approved the final design for the construction of Battery Boulevard. We still have some, we're still working on getting all the little minor engineering details straightened out before they're ready to start work. But the hospital is planned to open early next year. The street is planned to be finished about the same time that the hospital is opening. So what that's going to mean, when that street is complete, we'll have the utilities in, and then that area will be ready to start being developed on an individual lot basis. So, we've been working with Riverside on the Battery Boulevard plans, and on these plans, and later on, we'll be, they'll be coming in to the Planning Commission for minor changes to the approved preliminary plan, including a new stormwater management plan incorporating Tutter's Neck Pond into their system. So, all of this is working together to get all the little pieces in place so that when Battery Boulevard is complete, they will be ready to start development on an individual lot-by-lot basis.
Gotcha. Gotcha. I appreciate Paul for asking this question about the, the density that's been approved for the entire project allows for concentrated things towards the center, creating that village center. While in the, more on the periphery, you have your more single-family detached-type dwellings. So, I, that was my initial concern, so you cleared that up. Thank you.
Okay, great. Doug?
Yeah, the, I guess a couple of things relative to the one-ninety-nine hundred-foot setback and the change there. I think there, there's probably some concern that we'll be able to see these buildings from one-ninety-nine. And as we know, that, I mean, that's a, there's a seventy-five-foot protective area there, and that's, that's by design because we want that to remain a parkway setting in and around Williamsburg. And, um, and with that said, I, I don't think that what we're doing in approving this is going to really jeopardize that. I recall when we approved the Quarter Path, the shopping center over there, you know, they wanted to, the developer wanted to kind of get in there and thin out those trees, you know, for obvious reasons, for visibility. And, and we held strong to making sure that we didn't do that to, to help protect, you know, the view shed from one-ninety-nine. I think we can continue to do that as this process evolves so that we don't see these buildings. And, and I think if we keep in mind when we drive by and, and the trees are twenty feet off the road, it's gonna be hard to see the buildings. So I'm not so concerned about that, so long as we, we hold true to making sure that that beltway stays, you know, protected and not, and not thinned out. With that said, and relative to Sterling Manor, Reed, help me recall, those apartments aren't all sixty feet. I know they're fifty-five mid-roof line, but we didn't, when I was on Planning Commission, didn't allow the apartments that were closest to the road to be sixty feet. I think we held those to forty-five.
Correct. The, the regulations in the ED two district say this, you have to be, I believe it's at least fifty-foot setback from Ironbound Road to have the sixty-foot height. So the two buildings closest to Ironbound Road were closer than fifty feet, so they were limited to forty-five-foot height. So you have the lower buildings, and then when you're back beyond the fifty feet, you have the higher buildings.
Right. And, and part of what we, the discussion we had in allowing the sixty feet for Sterling Manor was the topographical layout of the land lent itself that interior lots, which were lower elevated than the road, that sixty-foot would have had the same effect as the forty-five-foot buildings closest to the street. If you look at them, they're pretty much the same height. I would be concerned, though, along one-ninety-nine, if the, you know, if the elevation, a hundred feet back, goes up thirty feet, and then we put a hundred-foot building onto that. Can you talk about the, the topographical area along one-ninety-nine? Is it relatively level once you get in?
I think particularly the, the primary area here is a relatively flat area once you get in here. I mean, this is, as you go down Battery Boulevard to this point where we'll have the interior roundabout where Reedout Road comes in, this is pretty much dead flat going through here. Then you have a drop-down into the ravine, and the road is cut in a cut here and in a cut here, and then it's in a filled section on a ravine. So, your development here will be a little higher than the interior road. But it's, you know, there's, I think basically in relationship to Route one-ninety-nine, there's not tremendous amount of elevation.
It's not until you pass the Quarter Path Road heading south, I guess, that it starts to get a little bit more hilly, as I recall.
Yeah, it, it comes up while you're coming up a hill.
Not, not on, not on Quarter Path, but along one-ninety-nine south, in the other direction, yeah. Back there, that's when it gets a little more hilly. So, but, just trying to keep in mind, I'm trying to visualize it, that that section that we're talking about is rel, relatively flat along the one-ninety-nine corridor. So we won't have the, the occasion where a building could be built on top of a twenty-foot mound. No, I don't think so, Ken. Thank you.
Gene?
Reed, do you know what the setbacks are in Newtown?
No.
Because-
I would assume in a number of the areas, there are very small setbacks, just from my walking-
Because when you walk around Newtown in front of the townhouses, there are, there is landscaping often in front of that. What about High Street? What are the, besides off Ironbound Road?
Well, are you talking about the residential area? I think for some of the garages along Middle Street, there were some waivers granted, and I think the, some of the Sterling Manor garages are five or six feet off of the Middle Street. Right-of-way, the apartment buildings along Ironbound, I would think are probably at least about twenty-five-foot setback from the Ironbound Road right-of-way.
And the parking, I, I'm all in favor of limiting parking whenever we can. Harris Teeter is an example of a big asphalt lot that's almost never full when I'm there. I know I talked about this when we talked about the hospital. Is there any conversation at all about a parking deck, anywhere?
I haven't heard anything at this point.
Because that takes away a lot of surface parking. So. Okay, thank you. That's all for now.
Thanks. Any further questions, comments?
Just one comment about the five-foot setback. I know it would take at least three passes of my lawnmower to completely get a, a strip of grass that was five feet wide. Now, third pass would stretch a little bit over on the sidewalk. But I mean, I think that gives you a relative comparison, that you can certainly put grass in, you could put some shrubs in. Putting both in gets a little tight. Trees get tight, but you can still have green in the space.
And, and there is a requirement for green between the sidewalk and the street? What, what is that requirement?
Well, the policy that council established some years ago was to have a four-foot green strip between the street and the sidewalk. Now, in the town center area along Battery Boulevard, where you have the reverse-angle parking, the brick sidewalks, or not, they're not brick, the concrete sidewalks there are going to be right on the curb. Because as we found out when we did sidewalk improvements downtown, where you have parallel park, if you remember, on Boundary Street, before we put the brick sidewalks in, there was just a well-trampled, no-grass-growing area. So in the heavily-trafficked area, sidewalk will be right on the curb. There, in that area, though, there will be six-foot-square tree wells interspersed along that more urban area. As you get past the center readout here, the road will have your four-foot, the grass strip between the curb and the multi-use trail or between the curb and sidewalk.
Great, thank you, yeah.
That makes me think of another question. We just got our governing magazine, I don't know if anybody's looked at it, but there's an article in there about how difficult it is to maintain these urban trees. Though a lot of people have planted a lot of urban trees, and they're all dying because it's so hard to maintain them. I mean, are these twelve-foot wells big enough?
Well, they're, they're six-foot square, so I think they should be big enough for the type of trees planted there. Now, as you get in- Now, as you get in the less urban section, the trees in the plans we approved, rather than being planted in the four-foot tree strip, are planted behind the sidewalk. So, they're planted in, in that area where there's more room to grow, and that's along Trayburn Drive, behind High Street. The trees there are planted behind the sidewalk, I believe.
Well, I just worry if there's some new research out there about how much space is needed for a tree to thrive. Maybe we ought to look at it.
And I think there, there's also a difference in a tree well, a six-foot tree well is a pretty good-sized space. A lot of cities, you'll see like a three-foot, four-foot diameter.
With a grill over it.
Yeah, circle. And you're also talking about a very different built environment around the tree that probably doesn't allow for a lot of things that trees need, like sunlight and, and good drainage on the soil and, and non-compacted soil. And with the six-foot tree well, you know, there's no guarantee, but you have a better chance of survival. Particularly in an area where it hasn't been, it's not been a heavily-built landscape for 50 or 100 years. This is, you know, it's new construction coming in at this point.
Any further questions, comments? Anybody wish to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve PCR number 12-013.
Proposed ordinance 12-21.
Yeah, excuse me, didn't, 12, thank you. Proposed ordinance 12-21.
I'll second the motion. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frye?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Thank you. And Reed, thank you, and thank everyone who spoke for this. Our next public hearing is a request by CCM LLC for a special use permit to sell used cars, cars at 401 Page Street. We have a request on behalf of the applicant to postpone consideration of this until our October meeting is, if I could have a motion to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I move we postpone discussion of this and the public hearing until our October 12th meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frye?
Aye.
And Mr. Foster?
Aye.
And Jack, that, that will be on the agenda for the next meeting unless there's further developments.
As we expect.
Okay, thank you. Our next order of business are reports and first, monthly financial statements. Jack, anything in particular?
Just to point out on page six, you'll see this month and the last time you'll see it, is the capital improvement sales tax fund. Initial $4 million borrowing has now been paid in full, and so that will disappear next month. And if I recall, that goes back to redoing the library and Mathewellie School improvements that were funded with that bond issue, and now it has been paid.
Anybody have any questions for Jack or comments?
No, just appreciate the inclusion of the interest rate that we discussed last, last meeting, and then also just an observation. I noticed that room sales were down in July, lowest in 20 years. Looked that up, and I thought that was equally disheartening.
Yes.
But I know we're on to better things, better days.
We'll see what August looks like next month, and then we'll, we'll see. But yes, summer has, our summer season has changed from what it has historically been, and it may be a permanent change, but we'll see.
Doesn't have to be.
We'll see. Monthly department operating reports. Jack, anything in particular?
Just to point out that there have been some significant improvements to the city's website. So, if you have not visited it lately, do that. And I think Mark Barham, our IT Director, Kate Hoving, Jody Miller, and others worked on this and done a really, very nice job with it.
I finally located all of my favorite places to go and approved the site, and now I'm looking for some of them again. Very much appreciate it.
It's, I like the dropdowns that get you to where you want to go much more easily than the rest. Thank you, and thank, thank Mark for all the good work on that. Next is order of business is city manager reports, and we have four. The first is the designation of the city council to serve as the Williamsburg Redevelopment Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. This is proposed ordinance 12-19. Ms. Miller, do you have a...
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Included in your packet for this month is the letter sent by Chairman David Watson with the Williamsburg Redevelopment Housing Authority, requesting that the housing authority and the city formalize its governance and operating relationship. At the authority's August 23rd Commissioners Board Meeting, the current Williamsburg Redevelopment Housing Authority Board approved a request to terminate their current terms of office and designate members of the city council to serve as the authority's commissioner. They also requested that a citizens advisory committee be created to provide opportunities for input and feedback in public housing here in the city as well. As we discussed at the August 25th retreat, council retreat, the next step in this process would be to amend the city's ordinance, designating the city council as the Williamsburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority Board of Commissioners effective October 1st, 2012. At the October 8th work session, council will then, if approved, would then hold its meeting as, sitting as the commissioners for the housing authority. First item of business would be to elect a chair and vice-chair and adopt a formal meeting schedule. The final step in this transition process that we've been discussing is the approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city and the housing authority on the operational funding issues that are still outstanding. And we would also need to update the housing authority bylaws to reflect this new governance structure. I would like to note that after the agenda packets went out last week, we did find a typo in the proposed ordinance. I provided you a copy this afternoon of the amended ordinance. On page two, the first sentence should read, should state that the board of commissioners, that the term should terminate September 30th, 2012, and not effective immediately. Recommendation would be, as requested by the current housing authority board, that the council approve the amended proposed ordinance 12-19 to terminate the current terms of the board of commissioners and then designate the Williamsburg City Council to serve as the Williamsburg Redevelopment Housing Authority Commissioners effective October 1st, 2012.
Great, thank you, Judy. Any questions, comments?
In light of continuing pressures that the housing authority, pressures they have faced, pressures they will continue to face in, in light of reduced federal funding and the overall challenges of the economy, and what that does to the income stream provided by residents in a lot of the housing, and how that impacts the housing authority's ability to carry out the job that it needs to do, the associated operational efficiencies that can be generated from this new arrangement are the type of thing that, I mean, I think we absolutely need to do, and it's important to do, in order to best serve the people of this community. And that is not at all, none of this is at all any kind of displeasure with the role of the housing authority. They've done a terrific job. It's just, you know, times have changed, circumstances have changed, and we're going to have to look here and a lot of other places for different ways to do business so that we can get the business done with the continually limited resources that we have at our disposal. So, I, I know staff and the housing authority board have put a lot of work into making this happen, and so I just want to express my appreciation for that.
Thank you. Well said. Scott?
Yes, everything Paul and Mary said, especially like to thank Jody and Andy Hungerman for, it's been a long time coming, and it's a lot of, lot of efficiency to be had here, and I think it's a good structure to carry us forward.
Well, I too would commend the current housing authority board for having the thoughtfulness to recognize the challenges that, that are faced by the organization and the benefit that this new relationship would have moving forward, all for the purpose of, of serving and protecting those that are in our affordable housing. That's our goal ultimately, is to make sure that we continue to do that and do that as efficiently and effectively as possible. So, I, you know, I obviously support this and look forward to continuing to offer those services to the people that, that currently are there and those that will need it in the future.
Thanks, Judy.
Everyone else said it very well.
Again, I would like to thank Jody for the hard work she put into this, but also particularly recognize and thank Andy Hungerman in the back, the director of the housing authority, who put a lot of effort into this. And Sharon Marchelia, who is a board member, is here today. Thank you for being here. We really appreciate all the effort you guys have put into this and the thought that's gone into this. And I think my fellow council members have stated it very well of sort of why we're doing this and, and what we look forward to in the future. So, with that, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the approval of, I have to say amended, proposed ordinance 12-19.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frye?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Again, Jody and Andy, I hope you'll thank every, everyone for us as well. Thank you very much.
And thank you. And on personal note, I just wanted to say it's been a pleasure to work with Andy and his staff and his team to start looking at all these efficiencies. And the housing authority under David's leadership and the rest of the commissioners have been very open to, to making this relationship work in the best interest of the citizens of Williamsburg. So, I see this as another step in the right direction, and there's a lot more work to do, but it's been a great team effort to this point, and I truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Judy. Our next city manager report is restoration of state funding for aid to localities, proposed resolution 12-14.
Last month, the city council received a report on this subject. And had I known then that the Virginia Municipal League was going to make a recommendation that you all adopt a resolution on it as they have for all localities in the state, I would have waited last month to this month. But that's what happened, and so VML has asked that all localities adopt resolutions calling for an end to aid to the Commonwealth. This local tax funds being sent back to the, the General Assembly of Virginia to help fund the state budget. And as noted in the resolution, Williamsburg remitted $48,941 in the last fiscal year, and there's an additional $42,000 in the current year budget for this purpose. And all Virginia localities will have sent at the end of this year some $270 million in local taxpayer funds to Richmond to help fund the state's budget gap. So, the recommendation is the council adopt the proposed resolution.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments?
He's one of my favorite comments.
Yes, I know. I figured you would.
And it's not just the aid to the Commonwealth. It's the new construct that seems to be emerging with the capacity for state agencies to bill localities for the work that the state agencies are doing because they can't get the funding from the General Assembly. And so, this is just part of, of the compounding issue. I don't know that it's going to help if, even if every community in the Commonwealth passes a resolution, but we have to do what we can to try to emphasize that we are all in the same boat, and we can't just plug, keep poking holes in one boat to keep another afloat. That isn't going to help. And I'm, I'm still waiting to hear the first candidate for state office take a no aid to the Commonwealth pledge.
It may happen. Scott?
This, this comment, you know, we've discussed this at every meeting, it's actually in my memory.
Right.
So, I hope, I hope this does make a difference, especially with the collective effort of VML, so.
Yeah, I agree. I, you know, I hope it has some effect. I think we all agree that, you know, if the state's sitting there advertising, promoting that they have a surplus this year, yet we're still contributing uphill when we have to make the difficult decisions, and not that they don't make difficult decisions, but raising taxes as we did locally to, to close our gaps, that gap is only great, greatened by the fact that we have to shore up theirs. So, I, I support it.
With that, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the city council adopt proposed resolution 12-14 and call on the governor and the general assembly to put an end to local aid to the Commonwealth now and in the future.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Ms. Scott.
Three seconds.
You will in the end. Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frye?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Next city manager report is resolution concerning the Comprehensive Services Act.
Ms. Miller will give this report as well.
Members of council, before you this afternoon is a resolution that provides for the implementation of the Comprehensive Community Corrections Act, the Pretrial Services Act, and the establishment of the Colonial Community Criminal Justice Board, or as we call it, the CCCJB. The implementation of all three of these items is a requirement of the Commonwealth of Virginia. The CCCJB Board is comprised of key criminal justice and community stakeholders from Charles City, James City, New Kent County, the city of Pecosa, and Williamsburg and York County. The resolution before you this afternoon reaffirms the city's decision to implement these acts with our surrounding partners and updates the membership requirements to the CCCJB Board so that it's reflective of what's current in the state code. I serve on the CCCJB for the city as well as Police Chief Dave Sloggy. So, the recommendation would be to approve the proposed resolution 12-16, providing for the implementation of the Comprehensive Community Corrections Act, the Pretrial Services Act, and to provide for the re-establishment of the CCCJB Board. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments? No. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of resolution 12-16.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frye?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Thank you, Judy. Final city manager report is watershed property purchase. Jack?
Yes. Dan Clayton will give this report.
Several weeks ago, the owner of the property, Mr. Robert Weeks, approached the city to see if we were interested in buying this piece of property on Airport, I mean, Mottown Road. The gentleman's left the Williamsburg area, and he has no interest in keeping the property. It's one small piece of property. It's actually two parcels. They're mounting to about 1.75 acres. It's a, it's, one of the parcels is a portion of an abandoned railroad spur that once served Camp Perry, and the other parcel is a portion of Airport Road that ceased to be used when the Airport Road was moved to the north. There was, that was the former railroad Airport Road there, and now, of course, Airport Road's here, ties in at Mottown right here. As, as you see from the map, this is the only piece of property left along this section of Mottown Road that the city doesn't own. All that in green there is owned by the city. And also with this purchase, it will include this, the multi-use trail, which runs now from Rochambeau Drive through the Wollmull Park to Mottown Road. And that's also along the, along this abandoned Airport Road and the railroad spur. So, this last piece of that, what we call the rail trail, is actually on private property. So, if purchased this property by the city, it'd be all on public property. The price of $23,500 was negotiated based on an assessed value of $21,000 and the owner's asking price of $25,000. So, we landed somewhere close to the middle. And to purchase this property is in accord with the city's goals and initiatives to pursue acquisition of open space and land conservation, both in the city and in the watershed. And finally, we have enough funds in our utility fund to purchase that, purchase this property. And so, the recommendation is to authorize our city manager to sign the purchase contract, which is also attached in your, in your package.
Great, thank, thank you, Dan. Any questions, comments?
Comment, just in addition to the obvious aid in protecting the watershed, the finishing off, or the city owning the rest of the property that's used for that multipurpose trail, even though this is, this entrance point looks, you say it's abandoned Airport Road, I mean, it just looks like a driveway there, and it, to be able to own that so that we have the complete ownership all the way through, I think is important from a recreational facility. ownership all the way through, I think is important from a recreational facility standpoint as well.
Scott.
Well, I agree, and I think, you know, some might say that this is not the right time to be buying property when, when we're physically tighter than we have been, but those points being made and the money being available in the utility fund, I think it's entirely the appropriate thing to do.
And the property's probably valued lower at this point than it.
Right. It's perfect enough.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we authorize the city manager to sign a contract on behalf of the city and to take all actions necessary to proceed to the settlement in accordance with the terms of the contract.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott.
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Farley.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, all the presenters. That was helpful. Next is city attorney reports, and we have five. I think this is bookkeeping after the General Assembly time. Is that right?
Yes, it is. If council is amenable, I'd like to start with 12-18, which is the real estate tax exemption for disabled veterans. This was a measure that was passed by the General Assembly in 2011. We did not codify it into the city code last year because there were some ambiguities. We have been enforcing this and using this for the last year despite the fact that it's not in the city code yet because we were obligated to do that regardless. Those ambiguities have now been clarified, and so staff's recommendation is that council adopt proposed ordinance 12-18, which will add Section 18-57 to the city code, which provides for that exemption.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I have a question. We don't really have a choice in.
No, we don't. It's appropriate for it to be in the city code because it deals with city real estate taxes, but whether it's in the code or not, the exemption is applicable.
And is that the case with each of the five issues we're going to be discussing here, or do we have varying options depending upon the matter?
You do have varying options with some of the other matters.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopt proposed ordinance 12-18.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott.
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Farley.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
The next matter is Proposed Ordinance 12-16, which is tax deferments for elderly and disabled. This is an update based on a change in the state code this year, primarily that the income limits, as the code was amended last year, were limited to sources of gross income that are subject to tax under federal income tax laws, regulations, and policies. That language was removed, so now all sources of gross income can be counted toward determining whether or not someone is eligible for the deferment. So the proposed ordinance in front of you provides for that change. It also is, the proposed ordinance is amended to make it consistent with the tax exemption for disabled veterans in that if a property is owned by an individual in a revocable trust or is a life estate and they're paying the taxes on it, the tax deferment will still be available to them based on their income, not by the way that they are, have titled the property.
Got you. Any questions?
So is that, this ordinance would make the deferment potentially less available to people?
Well, it would be potentially more available because it would be someone who owns their property outright or someone who holds their property in trust. But it would potentially include gross income that wouldn't be counted on tax return, so that factor might have a negative influence on it.
So it's really going to depend on the individual's situation, property versus income, as to how this will come, kind of have its plus or minus.
That's right.
And it cleans up some of the loopholes that somebody.
What's the, but the rationale on including the other income? Do we know that?
Well, the reason that it wasn't included is because the state code would not allow us to include it. You're basically taking a snapshot and looking at what income someone has coming in. So if they have a portion of their social security, for example, that's not taxable, we don't then get to count that, but even though that is a contributing factor to their gross income.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopt proposed ordinance 12-16.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott.
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Farley.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
The next matter is Proposed Ordinance 12-17, which updates the city code as to the city's ability to either immobilize or tow motor vehicles that are illegally parked or abandoned or, or in some other way obstructing public ways as a result of where they've been left or an accident. The code has been amended to allow not only law enforcement officers, but also uniformed employees of the police department who are authorized by the police chief to pursue immobilization or towing, which gives the department some more flexibility as to who can do those jobs. The existing city code is fairly spare in its procedural elements, and so we have provided for the procedural, procedural process that's in the state code currently, in the city code. I do have one change from what council has in discussion with the police chief, which is to remove from Section 11-326 the language to the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles, so the department would simply have to notify the owner of the vehicle when they have towed it. And I have reviewed the city code and the state code, and I think that's an appropriate removal of that language.
So this, this would be an amended 12-17 with that amendment? Any questions, comments?
I'm just curious, does the city do much in the way of immobilization of vehicles?
I would ask the chief to come up and address that.
I've seen it, I won't say prevalently, but I've seen it used on campus, but I don't recall seeing it.
We don't. Not at all.
So we would, we would be towing the vehicle?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's, because it seems to me the immobilization of the vehicle doesn't do much to add to the streetscape. So, thank you.
Thanks. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the city council adopt proposed ordinance 12-17.
Amended.
I'm sorry, amended proposed ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion, an amended motion in second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott.
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Farley.
Aye.
And Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Two more. The next order of business is Proposed Ordinance 12-20. This is a change to the state code that limits when the city can reduce the number of taxi-cab certificates issued to companies in the city of Williamsburg and in other jurisdictions as well. Those two instances are non-use and for cause, and so this amendment specifically states that those two reasons are for use and for, are non-use and for cause. They did add decrease in demand as a for cause reason for reducing the number of certifications, and so that's also included in the proposed ordinance in front of you.
Does this really change anything for us?
If council decided at some point that it wanted to reduce the number of overall certificates, that would necessitate council finding that the demand was decreased.
So we have to justify.
On a, on a company-by-company basis, the more likely scenario is non-use.
Okay, great. Any, any other questions, comments? I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of proposed ordinance 12-20.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott.
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Farley.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
And finally, Resolution 12-15. The General Assembly rewrote the section of the state code regarding how water and sewer bills are processed. One of the new requirements in the state code, if the jurisdiction desires to allow tenants to come in and obtain water service without the written permission of the owner, that has to be done by authorization of city council. So city council authorizes through a resolution that the city can accept applications from tenants or lessees of property that they're leasing or renting in the city, and based on that resolution, they can come in without the written consent of the owner and obtain water service. This essentially puts the city back in the position of doing what the city has been doing, because we do not require written notification from the owner in order for a tenant to come in and obtain water service. The ordinance does provide that the tenant coming in and requesting water service without the written authorization of the owner does need to bring a copy of the lease so the city can confirm that they are, in fact, the tenant at that particular property. The city would not continue, would not make a copy and would not retain the lease. It's simply a due diligence measure to ensure that they are, in fact, the tenant of the property. This does not preclude a tenant from coming in with a written notification or written authorization from the owner. This is just one alternative that a tenant has to obtain water service in the event that the owner does not give them this written authorization, or they're unable to obtain one from the owner for some reason.
Great. Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments?
The whole thing is amazing that there has to be a rule and a law and an ordinance about getting your water turned on. I mean, I'm sure it's protecting somebody from something, but what it is, is beyond me.
Does this in any way relieve the landowner, landlord from liability of a water bill that's unpaid at that property if the tenant skips out?
Next month, council will be seeing revisions to the city code to bring all of the notification requirements into alignment with what the state now requires. Assuming the city falls, follows all of those notification procedures, then the owner could still have a lien file on the property and would still be responsible, but the city would have to follow those procedures.
Thank you. Thanks, Judy. Take a motion.
I move that city council adopt Resolution 12-15.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott.
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Farley.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Chris, thank you. I think this is the first round of many of these that we'll see over the next couple months, but thank you very much.
Can I, can I just add something to that? I'm sure there are people watching this going, I can't believe they're spending time doing this stuff, but I mean, it is necessary to do. But what's really amazing is, what I'm appreciative of is the time that Ms. Shelton has spent working with the, all the great out product of the General Assembly and gleaning out of that what needs to be adjusted in the city code and going through the process of doing this. It's no small task, so thank you.
Joe Phillips as well.
Of course, Joe.
Thank you. Yes. And thank you for your choice of words, because there could have been other words used. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. We really appreciate it. Next order of business is unfinished business. I believe we have none. Next is new business. New business to come before council. That brings us to our final agenda item for the day, which is open forum, a time when anyone who wishes to address council on any issue may do so. If anyone wishes, please come forward, state your name and address. I have one speaker's card, Mr. Billy Scruggs. Billy? Welcome as always, Billy.
Billy Scruggs, 119 Woodmere Court. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Always a pleasure. First of all, I want to thank you for earlier comments requesting my input on the goals and initiatives for the coming year. I got an email this past week inviting me to the Thursday meeting, and I hope to be, you know, as I sit here and having been a citizen for many years, you know, one of the things that I think makes Williamsburg very special, we're small enough to know each other individually. I've certainly spoken with y'all, I've spoken with city staff, had the good fortune to know most everybody personally. Again, having been there, I really appreciate your patience. I can remember sometimes thinking there were crazy requests that came from citizens, and I think probably many of those crazy requests came from me, so I really appreciate the opportunity to have that input. As I look at the citizens of Williamsburg, I know that's what makes us feel like we can make a difference because you do all this. We may disagree more often than we agree, but I know you all listen to my input, and I do believe that I can make a change because we do speak. I came to talk to you today, and actually I had a whole lot more comments, but right before I came, one of my mentors, I had a telephone call with him, and he suggested to me sometimes less is more and that perhaps my comments today would be more of a bully puppet type deal than perhaps what I really wanted to say to y'all. So I've cut my comments tremendously. I do come to you today because the city, as my wife Sharon and I, through our businesses, the Fife and Drummond and Retro's could eat, we're members of the Williamsburg Alliance. I might add, if you're not already aware, I am a proud and longtime member and supporter of the Williamsburg Alliance. I think it's a tremendously valuable and important organization, and I'm very proud to be a part of it. I do serve on the board of the Alliance, and in that role, I received an email from the president of the Alliance, Kevin Walsh, this last week. What brings me here today, I was pretty frustrated when I got that because it, the contents of it were that it had proposed changes to the bylaws of the Alliance, and I was surprised as I read through it that the board, myself as a board member, was going to be asked to vote on these bylaw changes this coming week at our regular monthly board meeting. I was surprised because I'm too busy anyway, and as I reviewed them, I thought that there were some, to me, some fairly substantial changes. I'm coming to you because I want to make sure, as a member of the Alliance, that, and you as the citizens of Williamsburg's representative to this organization, I wanted to make sure that y'all were all aware of the proposed changes as I became aware. I also wanted you to be aware of the timing and process of how these changes are made. Shame on me, I've been a member of the Alliance for a long time. I know that the bylaws changed substantially seven years ago. Councilman Pons, I know, was there at that time when those changes were made. There were some changes made that I really didn't even become aware of until recently, one of those being that the requirement is only 10 days to let the board know of bylaws changes. So the Alliance is well within its required bylaws that they notified me. I want to ask you all today, without going into it specifically, to suggest to your representative, your appointed representative, Councilman Foster, who I have not had time to talk to, but I will be talking to him about this personally, that the Alliance be asked, and I will, as a board member, I would urge all to request that your representative asks the Alliance to postpone the vote on these bylaws changes. Personally, I believe that every member of the Alliance is, and also the city is, we all have an investment in this very important body, that we all have an opportunity to look at these bylaws, to reflect to you what our thoughts are, and I think there are some very good things in them. I think there are some things omitted that we can discuss. We need an opportunity to discuss that. I will be sharing that with the Alliance board. I will ask them the same thing, to postpone that. And once again, not to do it on a bully puppet, which I probably am, and I know I'm going to catch the devils from, from some of my Alliance friends and leadership, but I hope they'll understand. But at any rate, I hope that you will have that conversation with your representative. And ask the Alliance to put this off. We can publicly discuss these things, and we should. I'll ask them that. I appreciate any support that y'all can give me on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Just for your information, our representative to the board did send a copy of those proposed changes to all of council. Many of us have had conversations with him about that. When we appoint someone to a board such as that, we rely on them to think about the best interest of the city and make decisions on their own about what they think is best, but oftentimes to consult with council. So, and Mr. Foster, who is our representative to that body, has forwarded the copy of those changes to all of council.
I appreciate that, and again, I will be hopefully discussing it with your representative part of that, as I will with other Alliance board members as I get the opportunity, and part of that, as I will with other Alliance board members as I get the opportunity, and other of the 700-plus members of the Alliance. So thank you very much.
And again, it's their business, not ours. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council on any matter? If not, I think that brings us to the close of our agenda, and I believe we have something for close session.
We do. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter per Subparagraph 1 concerning appointments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Nixon.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frinley.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute recess.